My name is Teresa Minucci. I'm District Manager with Chartwell's. And thank you so much for having us. Sharon Seals is Director of Food Services for the District of Newburyport. And Eric Clements is our Regional Vice President. While Sharon is gearing up the PowerPoint, I'm passing out a hard copy of what we're going to be looking at. This is, we ran two surveys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Does this take a little bit to warm up?
We can start to read these hard copies. We had, you know, last year, as we've all known, and I know there were some meetings last spring, and certainly we lived the life of food services all last year, and all the changes that went through for the USDA in Massachusetts à la carte guidelines. Our school lunch program that was profitable for several years and self-sustaining became, had a deficit and a subsidy last year. And it was concerning. And so we did a lot of things throughout the year to try to grow our sales and try to find out what the students were looking for. And as the regulations changed over the year, we adapted to that. But what we decided to do towards the end of the spring, and after we sat with the Finance Committee as well, we actually put out two surveys. We sent home information, and it also went out on the website. And it's pulling up here. I think it's coming up. Okay. We sent, there was two online surveys. And so if you want to just read through, I just wanted to, you can take this home and have some more reading. I'll just touch on a few points. But it talks a little bit about the survey itself. So the survey ran from May through the end of July. And like I said, there was two actual surveys. Parents were notified in advance by email from the district, and surveys were posted live online. If you go to the second page, what we did is we tried to pull through data together to share with you. And this is the secondary schools summary. So we wanted to know, were they familiar with the changes? And as you can see, eighty-six point one percent were familiar with the changes that came through for the USDA. Seventy-one point six of the population that responded to their survey said they do buy school lunch. And then the top three choices as to why they decided to buy school lunch, which we thought was interesting. Convenience, time savings, taste and appeal of the menu, and nutritional value of the foods offered. Oh, maybe we need, I don't know, we need to turn the lights down.
There's only one light.
Is there just one light?
Oh, okay.
It would be too dark. Okay.
Let's go to private.
There are a couple of lights, which is here.
Okay. Okay. Ooh, it's a little dark, I guess, yeah.
There you have it.
Okay. We just thought it might be easier than just reading.
Would the audience prefer in the dark or?
Would you like to join us in the dark?
The camera, how would you feel? Surveys. Yeah. And then with. That's all right. That's okay. There's a few more surveys.
Everybody, everybody in the audience does have a survey.
Oh, they do? Oh, okay.
I had extra copies.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, Nick, I think we're fine. Everybody has a survey.
They can't see them.
That's right.
And then what we tried to do was we tried to talk to them about what was important to them as far as regarding school lunch. And we looked at, there was six different areas, and I bolded the areas that were most important. Five being the highest, one being the lowest. So time allowed for children to eat. You can see organic, local produce, whole grains, having choices, and à la carte items. Moving on, what we did is we, anything that there was more than one comment, we made a note on the left side what the comment suggestion was. And then we were addressing these. So over the summer, Sharon was putting together action ideas. And what we'd like to do is we're going to put this on the website, if that's okay, with the school committee, so the public can see what it is that they answered, and some of the responses that came out, and what we're doing. Gluten-free dairy options, delis, larger serving portions, cheeseburgers on a regular basis. And then you can see to the right, some of the changes that we're making. Identifying and putting more gluten-free dairy items on the menus. Talking about the deli station that's already at the high school that we're opening up at the middle school. How now we're able to serve larger portions. Protein restrictions have been listed. We have vegetarian options available every day. This year's our new pizza. And then free water. We always have water fountains available at all the schools, et cetera. The next page leads you into elementary school. So eighty point eight percent were familiar with the changes. Who makes the decision to buy lunch? It's a joint decision, parent and child. Three top decisions of why you would buy lunch. Taste, appeal, nutritional value, and convenience. And then also the same choices down below. Time allowed for eating their meal. Organic, locally grown produce, whole grains, and multiple choices for entrees and à la Again, the next page discusses comments and suggestions. Lunch is more like breakfast, is served too early. You know, we tried to explain in here that lunches are set on a certain rotation and based on classroom scheduling. We talked, there's a, there's discussion about offering more local farm fresh produce. And we actually do have a Massachusetts Farm to School program that we do participate in. Carb counting. We currently have a program called Webtrition that has all the nutritional values of our menus readily available at our fingertips. And again, I won't go through every single point, but I wanted to share with you, these were items that came up on more than one occasion. And then it does go into the second page a little bit there. Again, addressing vegetarian items and portion sizes. Something new is that we are daily menu announcements for the students now, so students know what's on the menu for the day. And then if you move into pages, starting with page seven, this is the second survey result, which was really geared more towards, we were asked to put a survey out about the amount of time children have to eat lunch. And did that affect whether they purchased a lunch or not? The response presented at the top tells you who was responding. The first question is, do you think they have enough time for lunch? And fifty-six point six felt no, they didn't. And you can see, it's the elementary and the middle school primarily. High school felt that they did have enough time to eat. And then if no, would you allow your child to buy lunch if they had more time? And seventy-eight point three said yes. Down below, these comments were, a couple of them were repetitive, but we tried to pick ones that were different from the other surveys, and then we listed those. And again, we listed them by schools, so you could see what the responses were and some of the concerns coming out of each of the schools. Just kind of reading through, advanced notice of lunch menus, salad bar, vegetarian options, à la carte choices. And the next page has more comments. And then the very last page is our summary and conclusion. The results of the survey provide guidelines for building upon existing school lunch program. The data provided by the survey responses provide a strong foundation on which to propose program changes. The major objective of the survey was to understand student dining practices and preferences, and accordingly, we can draw the following specific conclusions. Student participation has suffered due to last year's federal meal regulations and Massachusetts à la carte guideline changes. An immediate need to increase participation with more appealing lunches and à la carte options has permitted an ongoing student feedback to assure success is critical. Creating an exciting atmosphere in the cafeteria this year. We're trying to focus on what they can have instead of what they can't. More positive atmosphere. Communication throughout the district. Administrative support by helping to enforce the existing wellness regulations that are in our district currently. Teacher involvement and support with nutrition boards posting classrooms. Many nutrition lessons were applicable. Chartwell's has quite a bit of nutritional educational information that Sharon has already worked with teachers that have helped incorporate into our classrooms. School nurses to support our programs with online parent communication and wellness promotions and health fairs. Supporting the parents with special dietary needs requests and promoting parent involvement with lunch promotions. Student focus groups, suggestion boxes, taste testing surveys. These are all things that we'll be doing and moving forward with this school year. And then training the food service staff on customer service and culinary presentation skills to try to always improve food services. With that, as we talked about quite a bit, to help make the program self-sustaining again, you grow revenues or you decrease expenses. And we're always looking at watching our costs and keeping our food costs down and looking at waste and managing our labor and our directs. But the other big piece is really growing revenues, and how do we grow sales? So we did put together a bullet of some of the things that we're doing, and I know we talked about a few of them, if you could take one, pass that around. A little earlier. I just wanted to go through. So one of the things that we're doing this year is we're feeding lunch to the pre-k children that are attending the full-day program. That's new this year, and that will bring in additional revenues into the district. Our new dietetic intern is working with teachers to incorporate nutritional lessons in the classroom, conducting a plate waste study associated with Cornell University. She's also conducting a study in the value of introducing breakfast in the classroom for K through three. We're going to be posting nutritional information at all the food stations, so we can inform our students in making good, healthy choices as well. Our DDS, who's our Director of Dining Services, she works with the nurses to promote USDA changes and incorporate nutrition in the classroom. She's already met with some nurses. She attended a barbecue at the Park Circle to meet parents and speak to them about school lunch. She's been running promotions, Massachusetts Farm to School, utilizing locally grown produce, Simply Good Food of the Month. We always have a Food of the Month focus. Apples and tomatoes happen to be in September. We've been doing sampling at the middle school and the high school. So as the kids come in, and paninis was something that we did recently at the middle school, where maybe someone never had a panini before, trying to give out little samples to the kids to encourage them to try and buy new items. Sharon will be attending the open house at the Braun and Brown and Brezner Hand Schools this month. We have a new breakfast menu that we're going to be rolling out at the high school in October, and it's going to include smoothies, which are very popular this year. And it's going to include smoothies, which are very popular this year. We're going to be putting an article in the local newspaper, probably at the end of September, maybe early October, to try to promote to the community all the positive, really great things that we're doing in Newburyport. We're going to focus on the free and reduced applications promotion to increase the number of participants. So we did do a Kindle raffle in the beginning of the school year. And I know there were some questions on what that was. And what we're trying to do is we were raffling off a Kindle to anyone that would fill out an application completely and submit it. Their name went into a hat and a drawing will come, take place. And that's to encourage, number one, just to get people to apply for free and reduced and to fill out an application. So that has really proven, and we've done that in other school districts, to increase the number of applications that come in. So that was something that we're doing. And then we're also going to focus on the percent that is participating of the families that do, are able to participate in the free and reduced program. We did a remodel at the middle school. I don't know if anyone's seen the caf. It looks great. The colors are awesome. And it's very warm and inviting. There's new signage. There's a new menu in place. A deli bar, salad bar is going to be opening up next week. And we're really excited about that. We're hoping that we'll bring some of the adults down to lunch also. We're doing something called a display or an action station at the high school. So it's a made to order concept where, so when you walk into the caf, you can actually smell something cooking. And it's like a hot Caesar salad, chicken Caesar salad. It's made to order. The kids can say, you know, hold the croutons. They have interaction and involvement in the meal. And that gets excitement going in the school as well. We are focusing on adult sales in the elementary schools. We have a new menu that's going to be rolling out. Currently, the adults at the middle school and the high school can, can take offerings off the line, which there's multiple choices. The elementaries, it's a little more limited. So we have a nice upscale menu that we're going to be rolling out to all the teachers in October. So stay tuned for that. And we did reduce, we have an administrative assistant position that the person was promoted to another position within the district. And when we rehired, we cut the position, the hours to save a little money within the, within the department. I did touch on a couple of little things down below, additional opportunities. We have talked in the past about a breakfast program at the middle school, but we would need administrative support on that. We would like to attend the administrative council meetings, talk to principals, just to work together in partnership to help grow the program and educate the students about the great things going on in the cafeteria. And we are going to be looking at breakfast in the classroom through K through three. So after our study, if we find that that's something that would work here, we would like to talk to administration about that. And then labor reductions. You know, this is a, an area that's something that we, we do look at as an expense as we look at growing revenues. We look at something called meals per labor hour. The number of meals that we provide based on the number of hours that it takes to prepare those meals and serve them. Because meals are down, there is an opportunity. Of course, our first choice is to try to grow the meals and grow the revenues. But at the place that we're at right now, there could be some trimming. But it, we would like to grow revenues first and grow the program. That would be our first choice. So that, that was the summary of our, our survey and basically what we're doing this year to try to, to grow the program and put it back on track after all the regulation changes. Did anybody have any questions for us? Yes?
On the first survey, you, you mentioned percentages, but I don't really see a petition, an actual participation rate in the survey. And I'm curious as to, do you buy school lunch? Did that jive with your data on number of meals served? Does anybody compare that?
Right, well, of the survey, so for example, there was, the first survey, we had about two hundred and fifty people respond. The second survey was about four hundred people responded total. So overall participation, that was of the ones of the two hundred that actually responded to the survey. Eighty-six percent of those actually participated in lunch.
Right. So you would probably say that, that's not, we don't have eighty-six percent participation.
No. Overall, district participation would be probably around fifty percent overall.
Our average throughout the district about forty-two percent.
Forty-two?
Right. So I just, I, I, I just, from that point on, I just question the validity of the data.
I think it's just showing the popularity of the particular question because we had two surveys and probably some of the same people that answered the second survey might have also answered the first survey.
Right.
So, you know, of the people that did, and so we couldn't, of course, force everyone to answer that particular number of participants. So it, it gives us an idea of, you know, what people think and what they want, I think.
We went through this last year comparing September two thousand and twelve to January two thousand and thirteen and then looking at September two thousand and eleven to January two thousand and twelve. The earlier year really had the effect of the state à la carte limitations. And then last year was the federal. And we saw a decrease of participation for that period of time go from forty-eight to thirty-seven percent. So that's, that was, that was year to date for those periods. So that was quite a, quite a few meals. So I think, I think it's encouraging to hear about the new efforts to, that are coming through. And I actually, I had lunch at a couple of schools today. I had lunch at the Knott Mole and I had lunch at the Brezner Hand today. And I can tell you that the banter was really good. I had lunch late in the year last year, in June sometime, at the Knott Mole. And then the day I went, and maybe it was just the fourth graders, they weren't, they weren't too fired up. But today, I have to say, the banter was really good. Kids were really being social, talkative. I talked with one little girl at the, I was at the not free table at Brezner Hand.
How'd you rate that?
I don't know. I kind of elbowed my way in, you know, the kids are kind of small, you know? So, so anyway, this one little girl said to me that she really thought it was neat that her brother who goes to the mole and gets to have pizza. So she is looking forward to having pizza when she gets to go to the mole. So, but I think one of the things that as a, as a committee, we need to be aware of is, again, the year over year comparisons and how we're getting off, you know, what type of start we're getting off on this year. And I know there's still some things to be implemented. And the deli bar at the Knott is largely due to the fact that there's some construction work that needs to take place and allow that. So I think we've got a lot of things that, that aren't fully on board yet. But when they do, I think it's going to be really important for us to watch that and do all we can to get behind the program. I know we're trying to start up a new wellness committee. And Caitlin, the intern, I think is going to provide some really good information about the waste because I know that's been a big concern of the committee here as to, you know, what are we teaching our kids to do? So, but I think it's going to be really important to watch this closely because frankly, when we put together this past year's budget going into this year, we really don't have much of a cushion once this thing starts getting into the red. And I, I really, you know, from having, you know, been on this committee for a number of years and as you, as a number of you all have, and going through budget time, the last thing we want to be looking at is, is a program that's in, in the red come time to figure out next year's budget. So I'm, I'm very happy to hear about and see the thing, new things that are happening. I think some of the stuff, like for instance, the, the breakfast K to three, I think that's, I think that's going to work out better when we get into the new school. Because I think right now at the Brezner Hand, it's pretty crowded. I think it'd be a very difficult thing to pull off, you know, across the board. And I think that's what you want to do. You really can't, you really got to offer it to everybody. And I know that they're just really compacted up there. But I, I could see coming to the new school, that would be a really helpful program. So again, I guess I, the, the long and short of it is that it's important for us as a committee to be aware and communicate well with the food service as to how participation is going and how some of these newer things are going. But as the student rep, Ms. Bradley said, if she's not hearing as many complaints as compared to last year and, and frankly, I saw a lot of good things when I went around today. I think we're moving in the right direction. The thing is, is just to get participation up. And in looking at the survey, not to go on, I, I'm sorry, but in looking at the survey, one of the things that I looked at on these questions is what were people ranking fours and fives? Because, and I specifically looked at when those ranks added up to more than fifty percent. And it was pretty clear to me that parents want more time for their kids to have meals. Parents want to see more local produce. Parents want to see more whole grains, want to see more than two entree choices and want to see an offering of the daily à la carte. Oddly enough, if you add the thing about organics, the numbers between forty-four and forty-five percent of parents who are insisting upon organics, where the, and if you look at who ranked it as a one, which is essentially not that least important, you have thirty-four percent. So perhaps that's reflective of some of the research out there today that says that sometimes organic and regular, there's not a whole lot of a difference. But I'm not going to, I'm not bringing that point up to argue. I'm just saying that this, this survey seems to point to the fact that wanting organic products is not as overwhelming as, say, wanting local produce. So I think there's some interesting information here and, and I'm glad that the food service is responding the way it is.
Mr. Mannick?
Yeah, I just also had a few comments on the survey that I thought were, were pretty interesting. One is that, you know, one of the things that people did ask for was carb count, accurate measure. And the Web Trition program that you talked about is available to you, but that's not available to the community. Or is it?
It'll be posted on, on the website.
So that'll be the nutritional value. There won't necessarily be the ingredients, but you've, in public conversation, you've encouraged parents who want to know what the ingredients are to get in touch with you directly. Is that?
Yes, we have recipes and labels for all of our products.
Good, okay. And, and the other thing, there was tremendous amount of information here that I think is really interesting. It does seem to me that the question that came up and the comment that came up a number of times was having more vegetarian meals. And the response generally was they're available. But I don't know that you answered the question, are there going to be more options available?
We're already offering more. And I think we had a substantial amount, but perhaps it wasn't communicated that we always, you know, black bean burgers, veggie burgers. So we need to make sure that the students know that these are available and that the parents know that we have these. But I, I really received, the parents of Newburyport are very much involved with the school system and they care very much. And I received so many comments and I had, I, I put so many down and I learned a lot, a lot of insight into maybe what's needed and what they're looking for. And I'm working on different things. I think just, you know, making an announcement in the morning, you know, even for the little guys, this is what is for lunch. So maybe they think about it. Offering a set sandwich every day at the, at the lower levels. So they know every Monday you can get a, you know, a turkey and cheese sandwich, a ham and cheese sandwich, a some butter sandwich. Something that I'm also working with the nurses and with Caitlin is getting a gluten-free menu. There's quite a demand for that in Newburyport. We already have gluten-free pizza. The staff this last Thursday had gluten-free, a training, an allergy training through the nurse. And Caitlin also gave a PowerPoint on gluten-free foods, why it's so important that we regulate, you know, these foods, separate them, cross-contamination of everything. Because it's not only just to put something out there, but to have the integrity behind it so that we're keeping the children safe. And I get many, many calls, parents with, you know, children with all allergies, but gluten-free seems to be the thing in the last few years. So we have gluten-free pizza that we always offer on Fridays anyways. And now we'll have something available every day. We're just double testing the recipes and making sure these products are indeed gluten-free. Everything from what's going in the bread to what's the salad dressing, the condiments, you know, across the board. So we'll be rolling that out and, you know, communicating to the parents that this is, this is what we have. So they'll be able to have these offerings every day for children.
Just two more quick points. One is that I would, I would, I would hope and I would encourage you, given that we really want to monitor this very closely, to toss the survey out again before the year ends. Just to see whether people, what has changed. And then I want to echo a point that Mr. Cole made, and that is when you look at the number of families that would like their kids to have more time to eat and the number of families that indicated they would buy more lunches if there was more time to eat, you know, it is something we should talk about at least.
Mr. DeCannon?
I have a question, a concern, I guess, which I will address initially to my colleague, Mr. Cole. Hopefully, he in return will also follow through with people at Chartwell's and this. Are you reporting, or is the business section of our, of our central office reporting the participation on a monthly basis to our finance committee meeting?
What Chartwell's does, we have quarterly reviews, formal presentations. Last year, it got lost a little bit in the shuffle, the change of administration. But I will put together reports and I will discuss them with, with the superintendent. Our next one will be for September, October, November. And if.
The reason, the reason I'm asking this is last spring, you came to the school committee with a recommendation for an increase in prices. And we chose not to increase the prices at that point in time because we thought that that would just be something that would impact participation.
Right, I understand that.
And clearly, while participation and driving participation is important, our district problem, our district needs to take a very close look at revenues as well and be able to track that very closely so we don't have the kinds of surprises that we had last year. So if it's set on a quarterly basis, I personally would rather see it done with, with greater frequency. But, you know, as part of, one of the metrics that we see on an ongoing basis. I don't know if that, you can do a informal report mostly and then you quarterly.
We do have a financial statement every month that we do present to the superintendent. It's, it goes along with, with our invoices.
But we can, we can create another report that is shared with the committee.
The financial is a piece of it, but the other piece of it is, you know, I think we should keep a tab on the trends in participation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Keon?
Yeah. I just am curious as to how soon can we expect the next projection? Because we've already experienced a couple of projections. And I was wondering if you could maybe go into a little bit of detail on how you arrive at those projections? Because the first projection, I remember last year, was in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand.
Well, we.
Loss. And then we, and then we got hit harder. Now, that being said, are there any thoughts of this coming year and any more mandates coming down? Or are we probably looking at more loosening of mandates? When can we, can we readjust that hundred thousand dollar number? How soon can we expect it?
I, I compared the first ten days of school this year to last year and there really wasn't much change. So it's a little early to tell, but I think it's the trends, how we're going. We usually compare it to the previous year. Last year, when I compared it to the year before, I knew it wasn't good, but it's like, how much worse can it get?
So, so that, so this year, actually, in spite of all the positive banter, isn't?
Well, it is. It is, it's going up a little bit, but it's very hard.
Were the changes in place at this point last year?
Yes. But, but they were just going in. I don't think the full effect, the full effect really didn't hit anyone until about October, when they were coming back. They, you know.
Okay, so, so if you survive, if you're, you're staying pretty good through October, then you can start.
Yes, yes. I think as we go into October, we'll have a very good idea. But I already see positive responses. Last year, even at this time, it wasn't too bad. But as we went into September and October and they had a, no, this is here to stay. This is how it is. It kind of sunk in. Then we saw kind of the real numbers.
But just to be clear, I do believe that overcoming the deficit in its entirety for the year is probably an unrealistic thought.
I, I would say it's unrealistic to think that it's going to be complete. And, and one of the main reasons, and we touched on it briefly, is the Massachusetts à la carte guidelines. I mean, they haven't lifted at all. And we don't foresee that they're going to change. I mean, they haven't lifted it all, and we don't foresee that they're going to change them at all this year, so they're the same as last year. And there was a fifty thousand dollar, fifty-five thousand dollar drop in sales, year over year, from last year. So we have so many baked snacks that we can sell, we have the little whole grain cookies, we have bottled water, but we've lost so many products and opportunities that I don't see that we're ever going to regain that. I mean, maybe a little bit with some new products, little pretzels that came out, and little new ideas, and, but that's the big one. So we're focusing more on the meals and trying to get those customers back that we lost, but that's going to be the big, big hit that we really won't be able to see much.
Even at the high school, they're saying enough on the pop chips, we don't want them, you know, so you bring these things out, and sometimes, some of them they like, but they're not as popular as we would like them to be, unfortunately.
Ms. McCarthy?
So, is it that possibly, is there any mechanism by which you, I mean, I just heard this whole line from another school district?
Okay.
Actually, two other school districts. Do schools communicate, even different companies communicate about how they're doing creative things? Because I know, on one of the task force that I sit on, they had a similar survey, and it showed the same thing, that who makes the decision about buying school lunches, it's the children. And so one school district brought the children to the table, and said, pick one item from here, two from here, and it's Mrs. Smith's class menu is going to be featured on Friday.
That's a great idea.
And, so, I mean, everyone talked about it all week, because it's going to be Mrs. Smith's class, and what did they pick? So, and it, it, it does have a rise and fall effect a little bit, but all you have to do is serve one really good meal, and those kids will be back, if following those guidelines, but maybe putting things that we wouldn't put together, but as long as they meet the guidelines, that we would.
You're exactly right.
I don't cook, but maybe, you know, I don't know what colors go together, maybe it goes by color, but I'm just, so I'm wondering, so it's twofold, one is about bringing the kids to the table. I know you can bring the older kids to the table and have a discussion, but how do we bring our younger kids to the table? They want to do something. And number two is sharing the same, I mean, I'm telling you, I sat through this discussion twice in the last two weeks of other, of another school district, so.
Well, I'll, I'll answer your second question, Sharon answered the first one about the, what we're doing at the elementaries. We, we do have a great resource out there. As part of Chartwells, we have five hundred and fifty school districts across the country, and we have an awesome marketing team that's national, that supports us, culinary regional chefs, and, and they put together, what's really nice is, as a company, they prepare all these promotions and recipes and everything for us, and give them really to the director, so the director can do her job, and then promote it, and get out into all the schools, and, and run with it. So we do have a great group. For myself, as a district manager, I have twelve school districts, north and south of Boston, I, I've sat at many committee meetings, talking about the same thing, because Newburyport is not alone. And we pull our directors together, and we have meetings, and we talk about, you know, best practices and ideas, and we share things through emails, just internally. Even within the New England, under Eric's leadership, we have other district managers and other teams that we share ideas all the time, and have meetings. This past summer, all the directors went to a training, and we had our regional support all there, giving us new ideas, welcome back, promotions for the kids, and different ways to bring kids to the table. Sharon dresses up in costumes, and I don't know if you have a, a character costume planned for the elementary schools this year, but that's one thing that we've done in the elementary schools in the past. We have characters associated with nutrition in our elementary schools. Theo the Lion, for example, and Sharon has dressed up and had-
We go into the classrooms, and we give little demonstrations, and talk about nutrition with the students, and, you know, especially the young students, it's, it's very, you know, amazing how much they know about nutrition, but we create a little bit of excitement there. We always bring food to the table, we bring food in there, and it's very well received. I've done this with ca, with kindergarten, and pre-cag also. I do that at least once a year. We're looking to form youth advisory committees in all the schools, to go through their principals, and to, to get some students who would like to get involved with that. We've tried it at the high school, I think maybe, a connection with the young girl that was here, I wrote her name down, so maybe I can get in touch with her to see if she can, you know, get maybe just a small group of students. Hey, how do you like this? I have had a group of students from the middle school, I'll bring samples of different new products, they'll give their opinion on that. Sometimes we have taste testings with just, you know, we put our lunch out there, and different things. Do you like this, do you like that? And they kind of vote on it. Anything new that comes in, we usually do that with. But it is very important to get the students buy-in, too, so we can serve them what they want, because that's the whole thing, meet the regulations, but give them something that they like, that's nutritious, and perceived as delicious, and, you know, hopefully.
Amy Robey.
I appreciate all your efforts, the survey, the results, the fact that you're listening, you're being creative, you're trying to come up with new ideas, but a couple of things. One, you talked about having, you know, five hundred plus schools across the country, strong marketing, but what about advocacy? Who's working with you to talk to DESC about making these changes? Are you, are you actively doing that type of advocacy on behalf of the school districts in terms of the, particularly the à la carte?
We, yeah, I belong to School Nutrition Association, which is one of the, the, it's the association in the United States-
Mm-hmm.
-that deals with, you know, people in, you know, that legislation that's going through, and I get petitions coming across my guests all the time. And because of those efforts, that I and thousands and thousands of school directors have signed up, that's how we lifted the regulations in December, because they heard us. We were supposed to do away with chocolate milk this year, which, because of us being heard, we changed that, really. So things are, we're being heard, it's, you know, the voice of many, I think, and I just, Teresa and all of us try to keep very much involved, you know, in, with that, so that we know the trends. There's reports coming out, School Nutrition, that, you know, just talks about the trends in school, the impact, you know, new ideas, but mostly, you know, the, the legislation, what can we do? Write to your congressman. We have an automatic note that's sent to us, boom, if you think this, reply, send it to your congressman, and I'll get a reply back. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So all the time, that's being done, so we, we are a group, there is a group of us out there, that's trying to do that.
The other piece that, in terms of the operational school budget, you know, we just cannot be spending the kind of money that we had to absorb last year. And I know it was difficult, there's a, you know, we've heard all the reasons why, but we need to be able to address this much sooner in the process than then. So I'm looking at what you have here about labor reductions. Now, have these happened, or is this your plan? Should you hit when, and you're not making the revenues you project?
The, the employees are district employees, and so this was an opportunity for further savings, that we've evaluated, that based on the meals per labor hour, we could trend labor, and still be able to put out the meals that we're doing in an efficient way. But we don't have the-
So these are strategies that you're holding at this point?
Right, exactly.
You know, in terms of half hour of all five employees in the day? Have you put a hold on the OT yet, no?
Um, well, we-
We, we are, we're in the, right, we need administrative input for that, to make it, but my, my policy is not to have OT, but we have all district employees, so we have to make sure that, that's mandated by the district.
So I can't emphasize enough how important it is for us to have a monthly projection of, or monthly accounting of your revenue, so that we can keep on top of this, because, as I said, we cannot absorb the kind of deficit we're facing.
Absolutely, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manin.
In, in terms of meeting either on a quarterly or a monthly basis with the superintendent, I, I don't want to add to the finance committee's agenda, but it might also be useful on a quarterly basis to do the same presentation with the superintendent and the finance committee, because that would keep us much more in the loop, I think.
Sure.
So.
I think that's a point we need to-
Anything further, Mr. Keon, to do?
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Cole.
Just one last item, and I, I, it can't be overlooked, and it was probably one of the reasons why we did the survey, was the whole piece about kids wanting to have more time with their parents, wanting the kids to have more time to eat, because right now, and you can maybe explain it better than I, for some of the schools that have recess, there's thirty minutes where twenty minutes is spent for lunch, and in ten minutes, the kids go out for recess. Now, that's not an issue at the high school, and as you see from the survey, kids feel like they have plenty of time at the high school. But at those other schools, there's the issue of, okay, I wait for my food, I eat my food, I get my, I get my food, I eat my food, I go run around outside for ten minutes. On a, on a rainy day, that's not a problem, because the kids are in. But on a good day, that comes in as a factor, that, you know, kids are either having to, you know, eat their food quickly, and then go run around, and how much does that make sense? And again, one of my observations today, as I walk through the different cafeterias and look at the tables, is that there were some kids who had brought their own things, they open up their lunchbox, they're sitting there, eating their Cheez-Its or whatever, talking back and forth to each other, having a nice social experience. I saw a lot of those types of things. I didn't see, you know, I would look at a table, and I would maybe see out of fifteen, you know, ten, ten kids doing that, and five having lunch. So I really think the time, the time is the key aspect, because that's going to drive whether more lunches can be sold. And if more lunches can be sold, and more lunches can be purchased, that's going to mitigate against having to essentially lay people off. So I think if we can get that number of what is, meals per hour, or whatever you call it, I don't mean to, but I, I think with increased participation, a lot of the problem can go away, so I, I think we want to continue to find creative ways to increase participation, perhaps move more aggressively to reestablish that wellness committee, which was in place when Chartwells first came on board. It was a really effective group in communicating, you know, the aspect of nutrition to all the different schools in the district. It had representation from all the different schools, and the community in it as well, so. But I, I, I do agree that, you know, taking a look quarterly is certainly helpful, but I also think we have to have a serious conversation with principals and administrators about what would it take to give the kids a little more time for lunch, or what would it take to think differently about recess, or running around, or whatever it's referred to? Because that's not an issue at, at the high school, and, and the high school kids are clearly saying, we got enough time for lunch, so, thank you.
Okay. Any further?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing you again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can move on to the, I'm sorry, I'm not sitting down, but the light hasn't turned off on the projector yet, and it's, it's blinding me. Next item up on our agenda is an update on our special education program, so I would like to ask Dr. Barbara D. to join us at the table.
Thank you for inviting me to talk about special ed, one of my favorite topics. I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what's going on in terms of enrollment, et cetera, and I really want to talk about some of the projects and activities that we have going on in the department. And I just want to stress that it's been a really interesting five months for me to be here in Newburyport, and I really do feel that this, we have a very strong teaching staff, who really, really care about kids, we have a strong administrators, staff, who also care about kids, and that that's, you know, half the battle of getting, getting special ed, you know, going the way we want it to go. Right now, we have three hundred and forty-five students on IEPs, which is about fourteen percent of the total enrollment, which is a very respectable percentage.
Twenty-five or forty-five, I'm sorry?
Three hundred and forty-five.
Thank you.
So, fourteen percent, which is really, really not bad. Right now, we have twenty-seven students in out-of-district placements, which is seven percent of special ed enrollment. It would be, I would like to reduce that if possible, but sometimes these things are out of our hands. I have spent some time this summer doing some mediation, some settlement conferences, and there are a couple of due process hearings that I think may be happening. I always do my best not to have a hearing, because it's such an adversarial process, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we can, can move forward without me spending any more quality time with our lawyer. In terms of what's been going on, I have this long, long list, so I kind of tried to, to water it down a little bit, or consolidate it. One of the things that I've been working on is, I pulled a group of teachers together over the summer, to think about how we offer services to children with learning disabilities, especially at the elementary level. And what I wanted to hear from the teachers was ideas about how much service we offer, how much we are, how, how the kids are doing with that amount of service, how much is small group, how much is individual, how much is in class support, just to get a better idea of what's going on in the system. So this turned into a very interesting group, we met a couple of times over the summer, and as, as usual with groups like this, it sort of took on a life of its own. So what we have right now is sort of a draft framework for what service delivery options would be at the elementary level for students with varying degrees of language-based learning disabilities. We also have the psychologists working on a side issue, which is developing sort of a guideline to all of the assessments that we use for kids when we're doing psych testing, and what those assessments mean, and what are the best ones to use to decide what kind of services a child needs. Now, the psychologists know all this, obviously, because that's their job, but we thought it would be good to get that information out to the, you know, to other people who might be interested, including parents, because that, the assessment piece can be very complicated. So I was very proud of that, of that committee, which continues to meet, because we want to finish putting this framework together, and we also wanted to come up with some sort of exit and entry criteria for the various levels of service delivery, like what makes a child's need, you know, three times a week of, an hour of support, three times a week, and three times in class, and what, and why does another child only need one time a week? We're really, really looking at this, we're looking at IEPs, looking at service grids to figure out what we're doing now, is it working, and how can we do it better? And also with the resources that we have, because we know resources are always an issue. So I think that that is a really, really good thing that's going on. I developed something that I'm calling Guidelines and Process for Additional Adult Support. And what this is, is a process that someone would go through, a teacher would go through, several teachers, if they were wondering whether or not a child needed some sort of individual assistance. In the past, it's been kind of random, I mean, you could sort of have a feeling for, you know, how, if a child is really struggling, what kind of supports they might need. But I'm really interested in making the process more data-based, so I've got this wonderful thing set up with rubrics, and an observation piece to it, where at least three people have to observe the child in various settings across the school day, to see where that child needs support, where are they maneuvering independently, and so we can make, you know, a really good decision on where that child needs support, and how we're going to provide that. And of course, I'm coming from the fact that, you know, when I got here, I felt like we had an awful lot of one-on-one assistance. And this is not to say that children do not need support and assistance, but I think that there are probably better ways to provide that assistance without having a human being Velcroed to their child's left arm. So I really want to do the best thing for the kids, and again, use the resources that we have, and see if we can do it even better. So that's something that's, that's out there, the teachers are going to start using it, they're going to start piloting this process, and they'll let me know how it's working, I'm sure, probably by tomorrow morning. I have put together a process and procedures manual for the special ed department. I didn't bring it tonight, because it's about this thick, and it's not quite, it's not done yet, but what I'm putting into it- yet, but what I'm putting into it is, and I would like to put it online when I get it done, the new regulations, um, information on section 504, all the new IEP forms, um, how we do things, like this process for additional adult support would be part of this, this process manual. And it's not something that I'm going to reproduce for every teacher in the district because that would sort of be cumbersome. Plus, you know, with technology, I think I can put this online and people can have access to it. So, right now, I'm working with the, the team coordinators around what is in this manual now, what else needs to be in it, and then hopefully we'll get this done sometime by the end of the month or beginning of October. Because I just feel like it's something that, it pulls everything together that we're doing in the department, that we have been doing, that we want to do better, that we're already doing an excellent job with. So, I, I think it's going to be a useful, a useful tool, at least I hope so. Um, I developed a handbook for the instructional assistants, which, um, I did a lot of research on web and found other states that had sort of handbooks for paraprofessionals. So, I put that together along with some information that obviously pertinent to Newburyport, and it's about fifty pages long. I thought maybe it was too long, but I sent it out to all of the IAs, and they were, you know, the response I've gotten has been very, very positive. They're very happy to be recognized, they've never had anything like this in the past. I've also offered to meet with them once a month because I feel like they're sort of not attached sometimes, and they think that that's a really good idea. So, I think that will help, again, with the, um, you know, the quality of work and the morale in the district. So, we have a new process for determining whether or not a child needs extended school year services. Again, this is something I felt we needed more data on. We provide summer services for children on IEPs to prevent regression. We want to hold the children where they are in June so that when they get back to school in September, they have not fallen behind. And we know that falling behind over the summer is something that's associated with just every kid over the summer. But there was no, um, there's no process to how, deciding which child needed extended school year and which kids didn't. So, I have a process, I'm really into data, you can tell, um, and some very clear criteria on how you determine if a child needs extended school year. And this was, is something that would be discussed by an IEP team, obviously. And the reason I'm rolling this out now to the staff is because I want them to collect, start collecting data right now on how these kids are right now coming back in from summer vacation. That's sort of our baseline, and then we'll see how they do over the year. Did it take them a long time to regroup, or, you know, were they on target? So, I think that's going to be helpful in terms of our extended school year programming. Um, I mentioned I was working with the team coordinators. They used to be known as TFL, Team Facilitation Leader, and I thought that just sounded too much like a light bulb. So, I, so, it just didn't, it didn't convey what I want these people to do and how important they are, you know, in the roles of the school, working with the principals, et cetera. So, we changed it to Team Coordinator. And the plan is to, um, look at these positions as, um, as, we're sitting in on evaluations this year, teacher evaluations, so they can start to learn that process. Uh, I think this is going to be a way to just give them a little bit more, more power in the school without becoming, you know, dictatorial. So, I'm very happy about that. I worked on job descriptions all summer, and Nancy can attest to that.
She's still there?
Yeah. She's like, "Oh, no, another job description." Um, because we didn't really have any, so I have drafts of, I have all kinds of things. Uh, special ed, the team chairs, speech pathologists, OTs, PTs, psychologists, all kinds of things, which I think is, um, is very good because we didn't really have any solid job descriptions. And they hadn't been updated in quite a while, so I'm very proud of that. Um, in terms of professional development, I have big plans for this year. I've already had Alan Bloom, who's with Simmons College, come and work with the staff on our first early release day. He worked with the special ed staff around service grids, how you write service grids, how you determine, you know, the services that go in there, and how you write it to be extremely transparent, so that anyone can look at the, at this graph and know exactly what services the child is getting and from whom. Because it's been a little murky in the past. And the staff were very thrilled, they've had him before, he was here last year, they thought he was great, and he's very entertaining, so I think that that was a very worthwhile workshop for them. He's coming back in October to work with the special ed staff again around running annual team meetings. In the past, it's been the practice of Newburyport to have the TFLs, now the team chairs, run most of the meetings. We have different kinds of meetings, we have, you know, initial eligibility, annual meetings, review meetings, progress meetings, three-year eval meetings, et cetera. So, what I'd like to do, and what I've talked to the staff about, is have these, um, the education liaisons, the special educators, run some of the annual meetings, which are the, um, the easiest meetings to run. So, we're working on that. Um, the staff felt a little unsure about whether they could do that, although a lot of them have done it in the past. Um, they haven't done it in a while, so, um, Alan's going to come back and talk to them about that, and we'll do some more training around how to run an annual meeting. I want the teachers to feel comfortable doing this, it's a really important part of special education. But they seem to be, you know, in line, which is good. Um, Alan's coming back in November for our full-day workshop day. I'm not quite sure what he'll be doing on that day because I haven't, we haven't had any discussions about the, what the agenda would be. I also have ongoing consultation from Landmark. Um, they were here last year, last school year, in the late winter and early spring, basically working as consultants with staff around working with children with learning disabilities, and especially focusing on the executive functioning piece, because that, which means how kids organize themselves to get ready for school and to, to do a project. You know, if you say, "Write a research paper," I know what to do, but a lot of times, kids need a lot of support around starting a process, process like that. So, I've got Landmark coming back, and this is all, um, this professional development is coming out of one of our grants, it's not coming out of the local budget. So, they're going to come back, and they're going to provide ten hours of consultation to each school. And as to how the schools use that, I'll, I'll have discussions with the principals, but I really want the schools to feel free to use that expert consultation the way they think it needs to work in their school, because all the schools are slightly different. So, I'm really excited about that. We've been looking at the, um, language-based learning disabilities program at NOK, which started last year. It's still there, it's still in place, but we're looking at strengthening it, getting more teachers involved in working with kids who have that level of, um, learning disability. We're also looking at how to provide more small group opportunities for, and in the, all of the content areas for these children. We've been providing, you know, English and math, but we need to look at the other content areas. So, it's, it's a work in process. The ABA program is now called the BEST program. BEST, I love acronyms, it's the special ed piece of me. BEST stands for Becoming Exceptional Social Thinkers, because for students on the autism spectrum, that social piece is one of the most difficult. So, we had some discussions and we changed the name. This is a program that is very well reviewed, well-renowned in the district, in the area, has done a great job with our kids. It's never really been evaluated or looked at, so we're going to do a self-evaluation this year about the program. This program now goes from pre-K all the way through ninth grade. We had, um, seven kids enter the high school as ninth graders in this program. So, we've, we've got the whole district covered. I just want to look at the program and make sure that it is doing everything we want it to do, and again, using our resources, um, as, you know, succinctly as possible. So, I'm kind of excited about that. Well, I'm excited about everything. We have a classroom at the Brown School, which we set up. That class started the same day I started, back on April first. It is a classroom for children with severe and intense special needs, and we just need to do some program development around that. And it's going to be, um, an interesting process, and it's going to be very rewarding because all the resources and tools that we need to strengthen this program are already there at Brown. We've got all the expertise, we've got the staff, the knowledge, it's, it's going to be really interesting. We just need to pull it together. Um, I'm developing a special education eligibility intake form. One of the things the psychologists said was that they weren't getting enough background information when parents make a referral. Not that we want the whole entire history of the child, but it's good to know, for example, um, you know, if you're worried about this child, how is this child behaving or talking or functioning compared with other children in your family? It just, it just helps us to get a better picture of the child. So, that's in draft form. Looking at developing eligibility criteria for all the disabilities, and again, these are guidelines, they're checklists, because all of these decisions are made by the IEP team. But I'm just looking for some guidelines about what, what, like for speech, for example. Um, you know, when do you decide that you need to do work with articulation, or when do you think, "Well, if I do this for three weeks, the child will, will probably get over whatever this issue is." So, I'll be doing that, and I'll be doing that with each of the, the specialty groups, obviously. I'm really looking at section 504 because that's one of my responsibilities. Right now, we have a hundred students in the district on 504 plans, which is about four point two percent of the total enrollment. I need to do a little bit more research, but I feel like that's high, that that's a lot of 504 plans. So, I'm going to look at that and see, you know, what we need to do to strengthen that program and make sure that it's being used the way it's intended to be used. And last but not least, um, I want to have live IEP meetings. And when people look at me like, "Live?" I mean, everyone that's there isn't alive? Of course they are. But a live IEP, if you have ever been to one, they're really, really, really awesome, is you have a computer and a projector set up, and you have the IEP projected, the draft projected on the wall, and everybody at the team goes through that IEP and really writes it, sitting at the meeting, so that when you're done with the meeting, there it is. I went to one last week, I was very impressed. At the end of the meeting, this was an out-of-district meeting, um, we printed out the IEP, everybody loved it, I signed it, the father signed it, and it was, it was done. So, we met every timeline associated with that IEP. Uh, and I think that's about it. I mean, there are other things, but I could go on and on.
We're just saying, "Wow" up here, I, I didn't mean to.
I was like, "Wow." I mean, it's been a very busy, active five months, but I feel really positive about everything. The way people have responded to me have helped me, shown me how it was, how it used to be, how they want it, how they don't want it. It's just been a very interactive, positive experience, and I feel really good about the direction that we're heading. I don't think that, um, that this is a real trouble spot for us. I know it's, uh, it's been, it's been hard in the past, but...
Stop clapping.
So, I feel really good. Uh, do you have questions? Donna? No, I'm, I'm inviting her to talk.
Donna, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I, this is just a joy. I, I'm thrilled to hear what you have accomplished in the short time you're here, Barbara, what you've recognized as areas that need, needed your attention, uh, you know, I love the fact that you're talking about data and putting things together, um, the new manuals, the new forms, the new programs, the new titles, I could go on. I'm very, very pleased with your presentation tonight. I do have a question about, I mean, you've talked about work with IAs, you've talked about work with, uh, training with the, the sped directors. So, what about those situations where we have team teaching? And, you know, in, that's been, uh, from what I heard from parents previously, difficult and challenging and problematic in terms of, of getting, um, you know, the special ed teacher and the regular classroom teacher in working, you know, in a better cooperative manner in the classroom.
Right. It's a very complicated thing to do team teaching. They've been doing it at the high school for quite a few years and, um, are doing it very, very well. So, I'd like to tap into some of the high school staff, general educators and special educators, to work with other staff in the district about how, how this works. How do you really do this? And make sure that both teachers are teaching, and you don't have one teacher just, you know, working as a support person. Um, Landmark also has some ideas about how to, um, work on that team teaching model. And there's a lot of research, there are a lot of, um, resources available to work on this topic, and it's come up in a number of, of meetings and conversations, so it's definitely on my radar. So, that was, that's a very good thing to bring up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mann.
Um, I also have to say that I am really impressed with, um, I'm not going to say what I was going to say because it probably would offend a lot of people, but I'm really very happy to see, um, both, things happening, both happening and happening in a very systematic, thoughtful, intentional way. And I wanted to talk a little bit, it occurred to me, um, when you were talking about the BEST program doing self-evaluation piece, um, the question that came to me at that point was, are parents going to be involved in that self-evaluation process? And maybe even parents who historically had had kids in that program? And then it sort of begs the larger question of how are you working with the PAC and how, how are we engaging parents, um, you know, sort of in the gestalt, all of the parents, not just engaging them at IEP meetings or meetings like that? So, I guess you can weigh in any way you'd like, it's a big question, so.
Yes, if we're going to evaluate the BEST program, then it needs to be very thorough, and parents are definitely a part of that, because they've been using the program or they know they're going to be using the program. So, they will be factored into that. In terms of the PAC, I have to say that, um, Melissa and Kim have been just fantastic and wonderful to work with. We meet on a regular basis, at least once a month, and more often if, if I have questions for them or if they think that there's something they want to bring to my attention. So, they've been just great. The first PAC meeting is the twenty-sixth, I think that's a Thursday night, um, here, and I'm planning to come to that, and I think the superintendent's also coming to that. You know, just to introduce ourselves and get the PAC off to a good start. They have a really good agenda planned for this year. We redid the brochure and put it up on the web, so, they've been great to work with.
Excellent.
And then, of course, I have made it a policy to talk to any parent who wants to talk to me. If they want to come in and meet with me, if they call me on the phone, I'm there. I meet with them, I talk to them.
I would say that the feedback that I've heard is that you've been very accessible to people.
Yeah. I, I think it's very important to be accessible, so.
Um, I have just a question about Landmark. You're consulting ours. I do know there's a couple teachers at the middle school who've been trained, but do you know about what the percentage is of our teachers that have had any sort of that executive functioning training, or, I mean, that's one area that I, I, I could be wrong, but I think we've lacked unfortunately for a long time.
Uh huh.
I'm very excited about this, but do you, do you have any idea of, about, I mean, I'd heard there were two teachers at the middle school, which just seems so small.
Well, and what you might be hearing is that there are some teachers that we're lucky to have who worked at Landmark and were trained by Landmark.
Okay.
In terms of executive functioning, I'm not sure. But one of the ideas that came out of that frameworks committee that I was meeting with over the summer was to do a survey of staff and see who's trained in Wilson, who's trained, you know, what are, what are people trained in? Not that we want to, um, I just want a, like a catalog, so I could say, "Oh, if I want to talk to someone about team teaching, I know I can talk to this one, this one, and this one." So, that's going to be done probably sometime next month.
Okay.
And I know that, um, the middle school was really looking at executive functioning this year as being so important to kids, especially at this age, to get them organized, so.
Well, I, I'm very thrilled and excited, and I, I think this is a great turnaround for us, and, um, I hope you come back. I really would love to have you.
Well, every day I come in and my, my lovely assistant, Dawn Clay, whom I adore, says, "Oh, you came back."
No, I hope you come back here, though.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I think it's great. I'll be happy to come back. Questions or updates?
Mr. Cole.
Yeah. Uh, and none of this is meant to be skeptical, but I, I, I think it all sounds great. Uh, how soon, though, do you expect for, if you will, the rubber to meet the road on things like the live IEP?
That's not really difficult to pull off, I just have to have, um, the technology. I really only need two laptops.
Okay. So, but to get everybody into that process or understanding it?
Yeah, we need to talk about it, because one of the things that happens at a live IEP is you, one person needs to facilitate the meeting, and the other person needs to do the input into the laptop. Because maybe some people could multitask like that, but it's not very effective.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there'll be some discussions.
Okay. And then relative to using the end-of-year program, uh, or, pardon me, uh, the process for students to determine what they need end-of-year services, have you also considered the converse of that, using the end-of-year program to help bring students back to the that, using the end-of-the-year program to help bring students back to the district?
Yeah, I mean, that, that option is always available. I mean, we're always thinking about, what can we do differently to get kids back?
Yeah. But, but again, using that end-of-the-year program as kind of a transition to bring them back?
I think we have done that in the past a couple of times, but it's, you know, it's a good idea, because it's, it's a logical time, it's very structured.
Yeah.
And it's a short amount of time, so it's easy to manage.
I just think, right, I just think while you're thinking about that, it might be a good time to, if you're, for instance, making some type of criteria around what the processes determine student needs, it's also a good time to figure out what the process is, to maybe figure out what things you can remediate, or whatever the appropriate term is, to bring kids back to the district.
Uh huh, it's a great idea.
But other than that, I agree with all my fellow committee members that things sound like they're going really well, and, and I guess my last question is, has there been any feedback with respect to the reduction of AIDs? And I know that the idea was that there's roughly 14 AIDs reduced from last year, and about, across the districts, about 3.5 new FTEs for special ed teachers. And how's that working?
I think it's working well. I think the principals were very creative about reducing the numbers of IAs, and we're just, just trying to hold the line at this point.
Okay.
You know, because we always have to be respectful of IEPs, and you're making sure that those services are delivered, and that we're being, you know, compliant with the, with the law around the, the IEPs.
Okay.
But there's not a lot of, it's not really a topic of discussion, it's just the way it is.
Thank you.
Barbara, have we been able to bring on any student back from an out-of-district placement yet, this year or last year?
Not yet.
Are, I am assuming that some of this tremendous work you're doing, that's where the I is going?
Uh huh, always. I don't want the kids to go out. That's why I'm looking so hard at program development.
Right.
Around learning disabilities and kids with severe needs, and the best program, because the stronger our programs are, you know, the better we can keep kids in the district and persuade kids to come back. And I think our best defense here is to keep kids from going out in the first place, so. And I'm always thinking about it. At every out-of-district meeting that I go to, I will say, okay, well, we have this program in, you know, in Newburyport, and I have two parents, actually, who are willing to come and look at what we have at Mullen and NOC for kids with behavioral issues. As soon as we get settled down, these are young children, obviously, they said they'd like to come and see what we have, and they're in out-of-district placement, so my fingers are crossed.
So, so I, you know, I, I think it's fair to say that all this, this, you know, this prep work you've done is, is just amazing in terms of getting us in line, you know, job descriptions, you know, training of staff. But I did hear, though, and I don't know if I heard it, I understand that the name of the team facilitator is going to change to a team coordinator.
Uh huh.
And you mentioned having those people do teacher evaluations.
What we decided we would do with them is have them sit in on teacher evaluations, if the teacher agrees to have them sit in, just to so they can start to learn the process.
So you're not talking about taking them out of the teachers' union and, and having them be evaluators?
Eventually.
Eventually.
We're, we're looking at it as a pilot this year, and I have had conversation with the union that we want to look to provide as many additional evaluators as we can, because it benefits everyone.
Yeah.
Just a couple of things that I, I want to add to this. Barbara and I have, we talk frequently.
Yes, we do.
And, you know, this is really the beginning of a much larger process, and I think the pieces that, that are starting to fall into place, but it, it is going to take some time to get all the right things in place, but we're headed, definitely headed in the right direction. And I think that, you know, more outreach to parents, letting parents know what we're doing to address concerns that they've had in the past, I think all of that is critical. But it's, it is a process, and it will take some time, but we are, in my opinion, definitely headed in the right direction.
And I only have one more question. How does RTI fit into all of this? And have you taken that on, or have we made any changes in that process, or?
Well, I mean, we, we keep talking about it.
This isn't the first time I've asked, that's why, and even Susan's smiling at me about this now, because...
We talked about it.
Okay. Can you share anything at this point with the committee about that? Or is it premature?
Not, not really. I mean, there are RTI teams set up in every building. They're not in operation yet, but they need to be, because...
I guess more I'm looking at the participatory aspect of it.
Yeah.
The classroom teacher being involved and being a participant in those meetings.
Yes, I think that's essential.
Okay. Because I've heard that's been an issue.
Uh huh.
And I just wanted to make sure it was on someone's plate, that's all.
It's on mine.
Okay.
And the principals.
And I need to ask a very, kind of a nasty last question, I don't mean to turn the tide. What are we doing with special education budget-wise this year? How are we doing?
Well, the out-of-district budget, there were two kids who went out of district over the summer. This, these were things that were in process.
Understood.
There were two kids that went out, that were part of our contingency. There were two other students who went out who were not. So I'm watching that very closely.
So that's two additional outside district placements that we didn't budget for?
Right.
Are there any more on the immediate horizon, or?
Well, I mean, I mentioned that there are possibly two hearings coming up. I don't know what will happen. If we'll even go to hearing, or if we'll settle, I don't know.
And, and I, I just bring it up, because that's part of the whole difficulty of, of course, the budget process, is, you know, trying to anticipate needs or whatever, and I think it's important to keep bringing that up.
I agree.
In, in the public. So I guess, you know, as Ms. McCarthy said, I hope you'll come back, and I, I, I really would love to hear periodic updates on this, because this is the best news I think we've had in special education in a lot of years.
Yeah.
So I, I really want to thank you for your, your hard work.
Well, and thank you for your support.
Oh, Mr. Keon.
Thank you. My helmet's getting tight.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Building projects, have you been involved in the expansions and the sped room uses and the?
Not yet.
You, you haven't?
No, I mean, I've had conversations with Christina about the new Brezner hand and what that's going to, what the special ed places are, where they're going to be located. And I know the nurses have had some conversations about, you know, what the nurses' offices need to look like, but it hasn't gotten...
Not at the NOC-Mullen, the, the special ed?
Casual conversations with Beth and Tara about where to put people and what classroom might be best.
Yeah, I think there's going to be opportunity for even further improved service delivery with some of the...
I'm hoping.
...special ed spaces that are built into both projects.
Yes. I'm hoping.
And are we all set with space at the NOC-Mullen? I know we were in a civil action suit, civil rights suit last year about not having enough adequate space. Are we all set?
Yes.
That piggybacks on, I guess, Mr. Keon's question about space at the NOC-Mullen, are we?
That's not an issue this year. We're fine.
Okay.
We have space.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. This is hard to get.
Space is hard to get. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move right into our superintendent's report.
I, I want to start with an update on transportation. We had two remaining issues, which will be resolved by tomorrow. One was, we had a particularly long run that we have been able to divide up, and students should be getting home about 20 minutes earlier, beginning tomorrow. So that will solve one problem. The second problem was getting kids to the Brown School on time. They arrived exactly at nine o'clock this morning, the last bus. We hope that, we, we know that tomorrow will be a little bit better. Parents were asked to get the kids to the bus stop a little bit earlier, and that didn't happen necessarily like it should have today. So the bus driver was waiting for students at the stops, because this was the first day that it went into effect.
Hmm.
So we think that tomorrow, they'll be there in plenty of time. So those were the last two remaining issues that Mrs. Lysick and I have had on our radar screens. So, but we will continue to, to have discussions with Salter as the year goes on, and we will continue to put into place some of the changes that I had talked with you about, so that we will not be back in this situation next year.
Can I just ask you what's happened with the PM kindergarten bus out to Plum Island?
That's the one, that's the one that...
You mentioned the start of it, but I didn't know about getting the, the children back home at the end of the day, because I know that's been an...
It's, I mean, they're the farthest, so, so, I mean, they're, it's always, that's always going to be a rather long run, but...
Okay. So we're not going to put on a minibus or anything at the end?
No.
Okay.
But I will keep updating you on transportation if there are other issues. I really wanted to spend some time tonight just talking with you about school councils. I know that's been a concern in the past, and I wanted to share with you what I have done with that. Coming from a district and that was a very participatory decision-making kind of district, and wanting to, new report to be that way as well, is one of my goals. I, when I came into the district, I learned about the requirement for school councils, and I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to direct the principals, while at the same time, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize the role that they have, because they are, as far as the law goes, the principals have some decision-making power as well in their school councils. But I wanted to make sure that we were doing and meeting the letter of the law. So what I will share with you is that we, I requested that principals request that, from parents and teachers, a written summary of why they were interested in joining councils, that members should be voted in during the September open houses, that principals could make a decision as to whether or not they wanted members to serve for one, two, or three years. Faculty could be voted in at a faculty meeting. There needed to be parity between faculty and parents. Not more than 50% of the, the council shall be non-school members. All school council meetings are public, subject to open meeting laws. Meeting agendas need to be posted in advance. The information needs to be sent to Kathy Manning, and minutes are required to be taken. My suggestion, although they don't have to follow this, is that they determine a schedule for the year at the first meeting, so that that could be, be posted. And while there isn't a requirement for how often they should meet, I'd suggest monthly, but again, there may be some times of the year where they, they want to skip a month, and that's certainly up to the, the organization of the school council itself. And that really, they, they need to help to develop the school improvement plan, they need to be focused on topics such as improving school and/or student performance, budget development, program development, and that those are areas that should be discussed and plans made to address those. At the high school level, they have, also have the specific task of reviewing the school handbook, and that within two weeks of a member's election, or at the, the first meeting, all members of the school council must receive a copy of the open meeting law, complete the attached certificate of receipt, and that all has to be returned to Kathy Manning. I've given them some other resources as well, but that, we're currently in the midst of all that right now. And what I would like to do is to suggest to the school committee that on October 21st at our, prior to our school committee meeting, and I don't know, I don't remember what's on the agenda for 6:30, I'd like to invite all members of the school councils to come together, to talk, and to...
Can you put that together?
I think so.
Yes, I'd really like to, to make sure that we are functioning as we should be functioning, and I think it's important that they, they hear from me, and I'd like to have every, everyone in the same room, so.
Thank you.
Sounds good, sounds good. And then, one very last thing that I would like to, all right, any questions on any of that?
So, does that basically say that there'll be all new elections this fall?
Some, some of them had, have had elections in the past, so I don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay.
Because some of them may have carried over somebody else to, to a second-year term. I don't, I didn't get that specific with all of the principals.
Okay.
So I don't know that yet. And as soon as we have the information on who is on the committees, we'll post all that information as we're required to do.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I, I only raised that because I think, and I'm not sure, I got the general law in front of me, but I think there's something in there about everybody has to have a chance to be eligible.
Uh huh.
So that would say to me that you essentially need to have a new slate of elections or a new slate of potential candidates for everybody to be eligible, but, you know...
There is, there is advice on the website, the DESI website, that suggests that it's really up to the bill, to the principal as to whether or not they want to have one-year, two-year, three-year terms, but, so that they, they can keep some continuity...
Right.
...for one year to the next. But that's again...
You're talking about if an election had occurred previously, and I think you are too, and that's...
There has to have been an election.
That's, right.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And then, just the, the last thing that I wanted to update you on that is a high priority for me, is that I have met with Marshall Howard and Fire and our Safety Committee, because one of the things that we, that's high on my list is taking a look at the safety procedures that we have in, in our buildings, and the manual that we have that is, the last time it was updated was 2007. So we have, we've had one meeting, we have a plan moving forward, and you'll, you'll probably be hearing me talk about that at, if not every meeting, every other meeting, because I want to keep you informed as to where we're going with that. But we do know that we, we want to make some changes, and we do need to, to make some updates to the plans that we have, because information has changed, and some of our plans are outdated at this point. So some parts of our plans are outdated. And we talked about the number of fire drills that we needed to have, the number of lockdown drills, and whether or not there are any additional drills that we'll be having in the, in the future. And I, I came from the perspective of, that I wanted everyone on the committee to understand that it's really important to me, particularly with young children, that we are educating them, so that the first couple of drills may be just walking them through exactly what has to happen. Because you don't want to frighten students, you want them to make sure that they're comfortable and that they learn what they have to do when a drill occurs, so that when a real situation happens, they know exactly what they have to do, and it's very smooth. Yes.
And are you including the new Brez in this, or is that going to, you wait till that opens next year? Are we looking at that, vis-à-vis safety and exit and entrance of large groups and...
We will be looking at that, yes, and Mrs. Davis sits on the, the committee itself.
Oh, good, okay.
So...
Great.
You'll be hearing lots more about that.
Any questions? Mr. Keon?
Yeah, I like the idea of, of updating the, the safety plan, and, and I would hope someone would have, I'm sure they probably already have thought of it, but I'll just mention it. I imagine with the construction, the renovation, the phased renovation at the NOC, things change in the building. Some corridors are open, some corridors get closed. I would hope that every time something gets changed, there is a fire drill.
Mrs. Rossi brought that up at the, at the meeting and said, and said that, that with each phase change, we need to have a drill.
Right.
So that's in, that's part of the plan.
Okay. All right.
Is there any further business in front of this August committee this evening? Mr. Decanter?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up a, an item that has been put in, center in the news, and I brought it up before, and it's, we perhaps are not doing it as much as we should do. That's a whole item of hazing. It is sort of included in our bullying policy, but not really, or perhaps not as directly as I believe it should be. As far as I know, there is no discussion between coaches and teams about hazing, or teachers and other groups that might have hazing, whether it be other, other student As far as I know, there is no specific training perhaps offered to team captains who might be in a position to take some stances on, on hazing. It sort of goes also in line with some of the things you were talking about, the bystander behavior.
Uh huh.
And it's just an area that I'm bringing it up now, so that hopefully we could have some more discussion as to what we are doing and can be doing in that, in that particular area.
I, I would be happy to look specifically into that. I can tell you that there were changes that were made to the bullying policy that were, 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 um, effective July first, but they really are about, it's more about the adults versus students.
Yeah.
I will need to look into and see what type of.
I think, because it's, hazing is a particularly difficult situation to take a look at, because it wears so many disguises, it, it masquerades as tradition, it masquerades as we've always done it this way. Uh, I was at an event for a team recently, and, uh, there was stuff that I was questioning, and, uh, there was a parent that was saying, "Oh, this is cool, it's just boys being boys, and we did things that were ten times worse when I was a kid," you know? And so sometimes you get the, the adult, uh, not necessarily participation, but agreement to some of that, I give you, that, with the kinds of things that, it is so easy to go over the line. I mean, there's so many things that are perhaps team-building and a good fun, which I don't want to discourage, but it is so easy to go over the line that, that I'm concerned, especially in the news that we saw of what, what happened with the soccer team in Somerville, uh, and, uh, you know, the, the other, there's another school that came through that. It raises a, a flag, and it's not something that is, um, specific just to the high school.
Mm-hmm.
It is also, I think, prevalent in the, uh, middle school, and it's something that is not just athletics, it is classism, if you will. There, there are many ways in which it takes form, and, uh, I just think we need to be more aware of it, and perhaps be more proactive in that area.
Thank you.
I can report back.
Good.
The next meeting.
There's no further business? We didn't, Mr. Manning?
Yeah, um, I had, I sent around, um, an email and suggested that we, um, either talk about it or not talk about it. We, we have sort of gone back and forth between two periods of public comment, and one and two and one. Um, and, um, I've had, I've been approached by some members of the community who found that the second, um, period of public comment, which occurred near the end of the meeting, was very useful for them to be able to sort of comment on some of the things that they had heard, uh, presented at the meeting, um, react to them. And, uh, I wanted to sort of bring that to the table as to whether we would consider doing that again. I would encourage us to do that, but, um.
Well, you're correct. We have moved public comment several times. I, I believe we have had it toward, near the end of the meeting, and I think we heard from the public that they would like to have it at the beginning of the meeting, so that, um.
What I'm asking, we've had, we've also had two.
You're, you're absolutely right. We've gone, um, both ways with that.
I'd like to hear some feedback from.
Could we have a, a, a little discussion about that?
I'm fine with public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting personally, but if the committee chose to do two, then the committee chooses to do two. Somebody wants to make a motion, do a vote, it's fine with me.
Well, I guess I'd like to hear how other people feel before we, you know, since it has been brought to our attention by members of the audience, that, uh, it, it is a question. Um, city council has one public comment at the beginning of their meetings. Um, I.
Public comment is, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, is a, a privilege for the committee to define. It's not a legal requirement, I think it is a moral requirement for us to get the feedback we need from, uh, from the, uh, audience. I feel uncomfortable about taking the amount of public comment out of the superintendent and vice chair's heads, which is their responsibility to set the agenda for us. If there is a specific need or a subject that we see that, you know what, let's have a public comment before, and let's have a public comment after, because it's controversial enough, or we believe we need it. I believe we, as school committee members, should let the, the, uh, vice chair know, and she can discuss it with the superintendent, and include it in the agenda that way. Uh, I think as a matter of principle, yes, we should always have at least one, one session of public comment, but adding a second would, uh, for the purposes of always having two is not necessarily a direction that I would take. I would say if there's a good reason for it, we should include it. If not, I tend to agree with them, that probably one is, uh, a good amount.
Yes, Mayor.
I appreciate that suggestion, Nick. I think that, you're right, there are times where it's a, a pretty straightforward agenda, uh, public comment at front, after a half an hour of public conversation, and I think that if, uh, yes, there are situations where there is something that is, um, controversial or a little more, you know, we have a large, we can anticipate a large, uh, um, attendance of, of families here, then I think that we need to get feedback.
Yeah, there's nothing to say.
We have to be open to that, and to suspend the rules or whatever we have to do.
Absolutely. I was going to say, there's nothing to say we can't suspend the rules or request the vice chair to add somebody to the agenda i- at any point during the meeting, including another session of public comment.
To be stated at the meeting, at the, at that time.
Yeah, you know, you see the people are getting edgy and, and ready to, to start yelling at us, we might say, you know, maybe this is a good time for public comment.
Thank you.
But I think that's, that's the chair, the vice chair's prerogative.
Do you have a thought?
I think that's fine. Um, I know, but I, I.
No, I, I.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
It's fine.
Just in terms of engaging the public, I, I think it's, there's nothing wrong with having two periods, and it is up to the discretion of the committee whether you even have it or not. So, I mean, we don't have to have public comment if we don't want to, but we talk about engaging, uh, the public, we talk about wanting more participation. Uh, I guess it's been my experience that having two, uh, periods scheduled doesn't hurt you. Uh, oftentimes, if, you know, you've, uh, uh, gotten everyone's feedback in the first round, you go to the second round, oftentimes people don't choose to present, so, but it's there, and I think it's one of those things that, you know, you, you're welcoming participation. So I'd, I'd be in favor of two periods.
Um, I think what we'll do, maybe you and I can have a conversation, um, and kind of figure that out, given, you know, feedback that we've received, unless there's someone else that wants to weigh in and you want to have a motion this evening. I think we need to have a little bit further discussion probably between the superintendent and myself, and, and the mayor, maybe. But thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Manning. It will begin, uh, our, our conversation the next time we meet. Um, if there's nothing further, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.